Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you in this nice frosty start to what promises to be spring eventually. We'll open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to remind everybody to silence their cellphones. Meeting documents are available for your review down on the end next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Carol is, well, she's just leaving. She is around if you need a listening device, she can help you with that. So that takes us to routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Second item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from February 19th.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $2,940,580 and 13 cents.
Hey, the bills.
Second.
Motion in the second. Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, it's $2.9 million, but 2.6 million of that is for capital projects on the jail. And so our bills are less than what it looks like.
Yes, actually fairly in line with what would normally be expected if you take those extraordinary bills out. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are reports. There's a Minnehaha County Emergency Management Systems Summary Report for October through December 31st, 2018. That's available for your review. Next item is personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next item is abatements. There are none. Item seven is an item to authorize the auditor to publish notice to bidders for the Highway Annual Materials Letting.
Motion to approve the auditor to publish notice?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item nine is a petition for compromise of lien. Good morning, Melinda.
Good morning, Melinda Storley, Commission Assistant. Before you is a petition for compromise of lien, DPNO 87862, in the amount of $1,350.86. The lien represents poor relief for rental assistance in 2015. Payments toward this lien total $310. The petitioner is requesting release of lien, DPNO 87862, in full with no payment. She states that she arrived from Bosnia to work at a local processing company until she sustained a shoulder injury that has kept her from working for the last four years. Her only income is from social security and receives $839 a month. She pays $235 for subsidized rental housing and other monthly expenses total $392.89. The remaining money is primarily used for groceries. Banking and checking, bank checking and savings statements show a balance of $825. She is married but lives in a separate subsidized unit from her husband and is listed on another lien with him, DPNO 51810, in the amount of $282.67 for Lincoln County poor relief and court-appointed attorney fees. Her husband is also unemployed, however, she will continue to make payments for his lien. The amount paid off to date on that Lincoln County lien is $280. She's also been making payments on lien, DPNO 72033, in the amount of $3,702.90 for her grandson's legal representation from 2012 to 2018. He completed his DOC custody on October 4th, 2018, and has returned to Bosnia. She will also continue to make payments for his lien as well. The payments paid to date are $1,460 on that one. She's requesting that her lien be released in full so that she can have some additional money for herself. She was going to be here today, but I don't see her.
Okay. Are there any questions for Melinda?
Madam Chair, you know, a couple things. One is, I really appreciate it when somebody is making regular payments and there are dozens of payments having been made by the applicant. At the same time, we're not going to be charging her interest or anything. So if we forgive these going forward, the benefit is really not as great as she might imagine because she could just not make a payment for six months or something and there would be no penalty for that. So I'm not certain. I do believe, though, that making those payments is a really great thing. And anyone else that owes us money, I would suggest making some payments.
Any other comments? Commissioner Benega?
I have a question. Excuse me. When I looked through the information, she says she was injured at work. Did she mention in any of her income sources a work comp-related issue?
No, she did not.
It would seem to me that that is part of the conversation that we haven't addressed. She's getting social security, as she admits, to having that benefit. But I'm wondering why there's not a work comp settlement of some sort.
There was a language barrier with this individual. Sure, English was not very fluent and I, of course, don't speak in her language. So we were able to communicate as much as we could and I gathered as much information that I could from her. But that's a question that we did not even bring up.
I appreciate that. I'm wondering if we could defer this until we get some information from the applicant about work comp.
Okay, I can ask about that.
What period of deferral would you recommend?
Two weeks, is that going to give us enough time?
And make a motion to defer action on this for two weeks.
Second.
So motion in a second. Any further comments? Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that takes us to item 10, which, or to the, not item 10, but to public comment. And I believe we have at least one person here for public comment. Good morning, Bonnie.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am the current Chair for Planning and Zoning for Minnehaha County. I'm just bringing some awareness to you about our lengthy meetings that we've been having. It's not only the entities that we represent, but it's also the other counties that are around us or the other, I should say, cities that are around us. And it's become very complicated, I have to say the least. Not only with the additional of counties, we're also hearing that maybe Hartford might join us at some point. So that means that our meetings will become longer. You know, we're willing to take public input, but I also want you to be aware that it has also become quite heated at times. And some of that heated argument has also actually been addressed to some of our Commissioners. I'm asking that because of the length of the time that we are actually doing our service to the county and also the fact that it's a commitment from the people that actually are Commissioners now, that you actually help compensate them in a, maybe in a small manner of what we are currently getting. You know, I understand about public service, I've been doing it for a long time. But I also understand the time commitment. And you know, it's not only about attending the meetings. I mean, sometimes we get calls, sometimes it's also our staff who has been great giving us the information that's needed as well as updating us if anything should come about. But I'm also aware that, you know, just like you, I mean, there's a lot of paperwork involved, there's a lot of reading involved and sometimes even connections with people that might know us that may make those calls or even to our staff. So I'm asking that you take that in consideration if the time arises, that the Commissioners, I think, should be rewarded for what they do as well. And at this time, I also think, would like to thank any of you that attended the Heartland House event last Thursday night. I greatly appreciate that.
Bonnie, I'm sorry, I should have reminded you when you got up. Could you give us your name and, full name and address?
Sure. I am Bonnie Duffy. I live at 2300 South River Bluff Road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your work on the planning and zoning.
Madam Chair, I'll report further on that during liaison.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else for public comment for some item that is not on our regular agenda? All right, seeing none, that takes us to regular business. Item 10 is to authorize the chairperson to sign the equitable sharing agreement and certification to participate in the federal asset forfeiture program. Joe Bosman, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman with the Sheriff's Office. I come before you this morning with, it's an annual request for the Commission Chair to sign an equitable sharing agreement with the U.S. government. And what this is, is it's an annual agreement that we have that enables our agency to be available if there would be any federal asset forfeiture funds available to be dispersed to our agency. A lot of times if we, excuse me, play a role in some sort of case that goes to the federal level and there's assets or funds or property that is then seized and then through the course of the courts determined that it can be returned to law enforcement for law enforcement purposes, this agreement then allows us to receive those funds, which we have received in the past. It's also a chance for us to kind of reconcile, make sure everything is balanced with them. And so at this time, I ask if the Chair would sign the agreement.
Are there any comments or questions?
Madam Chair, I just would make the comment, which I haven't made for two years, I don't think, that I'm not sure why they call this equitable because every forfeiture that occurs within the city of Sioux Falls is within Minnehaha County. And why does the city get a bigger share of these monies than the county? I can tell you that any person arrested doesn't go to city jail, doesn't get prosecuted in city court. And we have a bigger share of the responsibility than the city does. And yet they get a bigger share of the equitable funds.
Okay, thank you.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is to consider a 2019 appropriation request from MedStar Paramedic Ambulance. Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Pfeifer, Director of MedStar Ambulance. First, I'd like to thank you guys, the Commission, for allowing us to come up here and speak on this. And thank you, Carol, for getting us on the agenda. With the document that we have provided to the Commission here, you can see that we are requesting $50,000 in funding for the 2019 year. We had submitted this request during the 2019 budget hearing. I believe it was overlooked at that time, so we are back here revisiting that. We were also directed by the Commission to seek out other funding opportunities within the communities that we provide service to. And we have since done that. We went to all of our townships, all of the cities that we provide services to. Brandon, the city of Brandon, has signed into contract agreement for funding us for $50,000 or, excuse me, $49,999. Just due to a, something they're going to work out in the end. But, so we've received that confirmation from the city of Brandon. We've also received confirmation from Split Rock Township that will be providing funding to us. They have actually made the comment that we're not asking for enough considering our losses that we provided to you guys. And our response to that was that we have to keep it even across the entire county with all the other agencies that are requesting funding from townships. So we have that formula that we use for those numbers based on the amount of area that we cover in each township. The city of Valley Springs and Valley Springs Township have both confirmed that they will be providing services to us. The rest of the townships and cities, we've gotten very positive response from them. We anticipate that there won't be any, or we anticipate that we'll be receiving the funding request from those particularly. There is one agency or one community that we do service that has sent us a denial letter. But as we've learned, it's most likely due to a communication error and we've been rescheduled to revisit that with them. So I don't want to single them out at this time saying that they are the only ones that aren't going to be providing the service to us or the funding. As you guys can see, the financial numbers there of our 2018 911 calls of revenue with the loss even including if we received all the funding that we have requested. And MedStar will still continue to provide subsidy, a majority of the subsidy, to continue our 911 service. And I'd just like to, you know, remind the Commission, this is staffing one ambulance. And we often provide more than one ambulance to the county for 911 services. So the biggest hang-up is providing county funds to a for-profit company. And the only way that I can try to explain that is, as you can see by the numbers, our private businesses subsidize the 911 service. We subsidize it a lot over the past years that we've provided service. And we're at that tipping point that we are needing the additional funds to continue to provide the services that we have.
Okay, are there questions for Justin?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
Thanks, Justin. And, you know, I, to a certain extent, blame myself last year during our budget process where we kind of glossed over all the agencies we had never given any funding to before. And without considering the special needs of this entity, I think that Dr. Luther has pointed out to us that ambulance is threatened across the state and that one ambulance service that was the ambulance of the year three years ago is now out of business. And I think we went from 176 ambulance services in the state to like 135 now. We cannot afford to lose an ambulance service in this county. And as for the profit part of it, even the volunteers pay themselves when they're on calls and stuff. And the fact that, you know, let's say I'm, let's say that a big drift of snow appeared in my driveway and I hired my neighbor, on the one hand, for profit and the church, on the other hand, to shovel out my snow. I'm paying them both. What's the difference between it? I'm paying them for a job to get done. This ambulance district is a, is a area that we are contracting with them to cover. In every other case within our county, except for the one that's in Sioux Falls, we have subsidized them. And I see this as being something that's going to become more and more necessary. And I know that in Yankton County, the county has one ambulance that they pay for. It costs the county a million dollars a year. And if we lose any of these services, a million dollars is not without valid possibility. You know, there are many, many issues. Jason Guerman is here also today, many issues involving ambulance. And Gerald will tell you also that it can be pretty complicated. You know, an ambulance run from Beersford to Sioux Falls pays three times as much as an ambulance run from Dell Rapids to Sioux Falls. Why? That's because we're an urban county and Union and Lincoln are not. And that's a federal issue. And so there are many, many things involved in this that we need to work on more. But I would urge us to consider finding some funds to assist these folks that are providing a service in a district that we've asked them to cover.
Other comments?
I'll just make a couple. I certainly appreciate you guys being here. And I'm not sure where that conversation to the for-profit, nonprofit got so blown out of proportion. That's not the issue for me. It's the issue of information and being able to understand your business a little better. All the other places that we supported in the 2019 with the applications that came last summer or whenever it was, had some detailed information about their operation. They submitted a request, if you will. And I think we got yours back, but it didn't have anything on it and I don't know why. But that's not the issue. That's probably why we made the decision we made. So I would like a little bit more information about, not so much about each of these sites as much as the county versus the city of Brandon and other areas that you cover and what reimbursements you get from them. Because as Jeff said, some of the smaller communities that we do support gave us not only the information, but each one of them was a little different in the fact on how much money that those cities participated in based on the application process that they submitted. So it's an urban versus rural and I certainly will support something for that. But I need more information than what I have, to be honest, to make that. I hope you understand that. And it's not a for-profit, nonprofit conversation. Every person that we asked to submit that information did that. So when I submit my allocations for United Way, I go through 128-page application for five programs. That gives them detailed information about the organization, what we do, how we do it, what our costs are, where we spend our time, where the units of service are actually at, which county they're in. And I don't think that's inappropriate for somebody who's making taxpayer decisions. So at some point, if we could get that information from you, I think it would be extremely important.
Could I comment back?
Oh, of course.
So I thank you for bringing attention to that. And when we had submitted our request for funding for the 2019 year last summer or whenever it was, we did not have the breakdown of financials that you were discussing there. We've always just lumped it in and we always knew that 911 was always losing money and we just did not split the financials out.
Sure.
We have since then done that in those of the financials that I have provided for you today. The reasons that you don't have the funding or other agencies that assist us is because we've never had that before. And like I discussed in the beginning here, the agencies that are committed to us to providing that. And if I understand your question correctly, you're asking if the comparison of what this, for example, the city of Brandon is providing us for funding, relevance to the number of services that we provide to that city?
Correct.
And that's a really difficult formula to try to portray because we provide the services as a whole. We provided 505, or I think it was 505, 911 calls, which included the city of Brandon, the city of Valley Springs, the city of Crooks, and all the county area. Breaking that down to say that 200 of those calls were actually county property or county area and that's just a guest number formulated to $50,000 as we're requesting. I guess we're trying to look at it as a whole package. We're providing the services because essentially the city of Brandon is part of the county. And the city is acknowledging that, yeah, and the majority of your service is provided here, so we're going to do what we can to help in a higher level of funding. So I'm not sure if that quite answers your question that you...
It does. And you're right, there's 502 transports. But instead of just making assumptions on how many numbers are coming from Brandon and how many are coming from Hartford or Humboldt or whatever, it would be interesting for us to know percentage-wise how many of those are actually in rural Minnehaha County versus the cities in the county. And if we can get that kind of information, it helps us make good logical assumptions on what we're appropriating for your support. And again, I do support helping you with that. But like everything else that we do at the county, we do need, we have responsibilities for certain areas and that particular function is defined by frankly, the information that's provided.
And I appreciate that. And as you can see in the financials I provided, MedStar will continue to subsidize the majority of our loss every year. Just as an example, the city of Garrettson provides, I believe, it's $35,000 to their ambulance service, where the county provides $50,000. Well, you obviously know that they provide more services to the city of Garrettson versus the county of Garrettson. So in that comparison, the city is not subsidizing or matching the county's support.
That's a good example, but I can tell you, and I don't have the application forms in front of me, so it's my bad memory, so don't record it as facts. But there's a wide variety of percentages that are supported by each city toward the total cost percentage-wise as, instead of just on a dollar basis, it's based on whatever the city feels they want to support. Some of them are as high as 50% fundraising and some of them frankly, don't do hardly any fundraising. So if we could get, if we're comparing apples and apples and don't get caught up in the nonprofit versus for-profit, that's not what we're interested in, at least I'm not. I'm more interested in your cost per unit and how many of those units are inside this county that are not city-county related issues.
Sure. Go ahead, Jay.
Yep, thank you. Jay Major, 25968, 476th Avenue in Sioux Falls, but in the county. What Justin's trying to say, and obviously he speaks better than I do sometimes, but what he's trying to say is although you're asking for percentages, this is where the money is. Split Rock Township doesn't have the money to provide what they need for Split Rock Township, for an ambulance service. The money Split Rock Township gives us might be one and a half people that can't afford their ambulance ride. The money that Brandon's given us and the money we're requesting from here is the same dollar amount. Having, knowing that, if we got you the percentages between the county and the city of Brandon and we showed you our actual loss, are you willing to make that up? Because when you look at our actual loss versus what we're asking for, for help, is much different than, well, if we're only asking for 20% of our loss and we're going to fight over pennies over, well, is it Brandon, is it Valley Springs, is it this, is it this? Well, if we want to talk about actual loss, now we're in a whole different ballgame. Now we're in a ballgame of, we're not asking you for 50, we're asking you for 250. And we're asking the city of Brandon for 250. And we're asking Valley Springs for 30. Nobody can afford that. And MedStar understands that. We understand you can't afford that. And we understand that our private services, including my transit service, all that money goes in to pay for our 911 service. And I'm not sure that's quite appreciated the way it should be. My wife and I's businesses all pile in to the loss of 911. And so as we're going to sit here and dilly-daddle over $50,000 or is this percentage correct or is this percentage different? Well, if we want to dilly-dally, let's dilly-dally over the 100% loss that we're assuming because that's what Garrettson gets. At the end of the day, Garrettson breaks even. At the end of the day, Dell Rapids breaks even. At the end of the day, the company that has seven critical care paramedics ambulances available at any time doesn't. And I don't want to sit here with this Commission and dilly-daddle over pennies. Basically, it is pennies compared to what our loss is. There's no secret, the county's where the money is. There's no secret, the city of Brandon's where the money is. There's no secret that the townships don't have that kind of money. Split Rock has much more than, say, the township that covers renter. But we're not asking Split Rock for any more than we're asking for renter for because that is the formula we came up with. Now, we talk about the differences of, well, we want to know the percentages. Well, that's the first time because it sounds to me as Dell Rapids gets 50, Humboldt gets 50, Garrettson gets 50. Now, if you were truly interested in the percentages, they all wouldn't be the same now, would they? So we're simply standing here saying that you have some of the best services in the country with MedStar. You have the most ambulances in a small area than they probably have anywhere. And we've built that up from two ambulances up to seven. And we built that because of our private enterprise, not a 911 system. But because of our private enterprise, we have the ability to send out possibility of seven ambulances at one time. That's more than Sioux Falls does. So I don't want to sit here and fight over crackers on the floor. I'm just simply asking for the help that you've given every other ambulance service in this county except for Sioux Falls because Sioux Falls can sustain itself. They've got the numbers to do that. The county doesn't. And that's where we're going to stand. That's where I am standing. And I do understand, I appreciate your willingness to look after the taxpayers' dollars. I totally get it, Gerald, Mr. Benega. I totally get it. And, but I'm not here to scold anybody, I'm here to tell you why it is we're standing here. This is embarrassing for me. I have provided these services for how many years with no help, but the help came from my family. That's where the help came from. I'm asking every family in the county... family in the county and every family in these cities to help a little bit, so my family doesn't have to struggle quite so much to provide the services we're providing in this area. So I'm not gonna sit here and fight over little scraps on the floor. That is what we are asking for, and that's what we need to continue to provide, the services at the level we're providing them at. Yesterday, just for an example, Garrettson was mutilated to another area. We were mutilated to Garrettson. Now, if Garrettson had to wait for Sioux Falls to be mutilated there, look at that time response. Not something I want for my family. So that's where we're standing. And please don't get caught up in the game of, well, because you do this here and this here, it seems to be different. It's not. We're all in this together. And if we want to continue to go down the path of, well, what should we really be paying on this 20% or the 80% loss, well, maybe we should then look at, what should you be paying to make it a zero balance at the end of the year?
Thank you.
And that's pretty much where I stand. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
I'd like to respond to that. And we're not dilly-dallying about peanuts, or crackers, or whatever you're comparing it to. In fact, that comment kind of irritates me, to be honest, Jay. When I look at your profit and loss statement, you're showing a $507,000 loss. And you're saying that $50,000 is gonna make that operational change enough so that you can stay in operation? That's why I asked the information. Having an accounting background and understanding finances pretty well, you cannot continually lose a half a million dollars over a period of time and be cash flow positive. That's impossible.
Unless you have something else subsidizing it. And there again, Gerald...
That's part of the request for the information.
I understand that. And that's where yours and my view on this is totally different. You're right. It's absolutely foolish for a businessman to lose a half million dollars. Except if it's your child laying on the floor that needs an ambulance in two minutes, then it's not foolish anymore. My family has provided that. And you can smile, you can laugh, but my family has provided that for every resident that we have served. And yes, I do get a little upset over this, because it is crackers compared to what I'm losing. And it's not just your $50,000. It's the 50 that the city of Brandon's helping. So now it's 100. And that's the 5 that Valley Springs is looking. Now it's 105,000. What we have done is exactly what your county commissioner has asked us to do. You guys, I hate to say it this way, you pawned us off on everybody else. Go see if you can find funding every place else. We did that. And we're back here. And frankly, out of everybody else we spoke to, we've had the most opposition right here from this committee.
Okay. Are there any other comments?
I will make one more, and then I'm done. The reason that there was, and we're not pawning it off to someone else, we're just asking for information, just like you give to the other communities.
You have right in front of you exactly what we gave them.
And what I would like to suggest is if the information was provided when we were doing our budget in June, we probably would have made a different decision. And that's all we're asking for now, is to have that information so we can change our decision.
Okay. I think that topic has been covered.
I think so.
Commissioner Barth.
I would just say that I do believe that we should help MedStar. And I would also say that just because Jay can rub us the wrong way, isn't the reason to say no. Just recently, we gave 50,000 to another organization outside of our budget time with very little consideration. I know that in the past, we had similar discussions with the volunteer groups, and we said, go out and ask the townships, go out and ask the cities. And Humboldt certainly led the way in successfully finding ways to fund themselves. But again, I don't think we can afford to gamble that the service will stay operating. And I think we should immediately seek to find some money to give them. And don't let, you know, going into the doctor, if I'm having my appendix taken out, I don't need my surgeon to be a nice guy. I need him to be good at what he does. And I think Dr. Luther's statistics show that MedStar is good at what they do. And I think we should try to keep MedStar healthy in case I need my appendix out again. Anyway...
Commissioner Heiburger?
I've been quiet because I've been gone. Sorry. I appreciate the comments that have been made, and I appreciate Justin, the presentation you've given. And Jay, I realize you're very passionate, sometimes a little bit too much. We are interested in trying to do something, I think, and I agree. Just provide us what information we needed. Let's work through the process so that when we end up finishing up '19, that you guys are satisfied, and we're satisfied. And when we do our 2020 budget, that we can get through this as respectfully as possible and figure out how it works. We need your ambulance. There's never been a question of that. We just need to figure out how to move forward with it. And hopefully, this has started some of that conversation, that we can figure out how to move forward.
And I would agree that, just let me make my comment, and then I'll let you come up and talk if you'd like to, Justin. That, you know, honestly, you guys have given us information about just the piece of the business you want to talk about, which is not the kind of information that we receive from all the other ambulance services. They give a full profit and loss, net loss, not gain, on the entire business, so we can see where they are exactly on the entire business and the service that they provide. And so, and I think that, I agree with Commissioner Heiburger, that this is, I appreciate you guys pushing us to look at this closer as an overall system, because, you know, you guys are bringing forward good questions about the overall way that we have funded ambulances. And, you know, I think we've always talked here about the fact that ambulance services is not something that we are required by statute to serve. I question a little bit that we are the place where all the money hangs out, because at budget time, it certainly doesn't seem like that. But I do think that we need to look at our entire process and figure out how it is that we allocate money throughout the entire ambulance system that provides services. And I see Jason Gierman here, and I appreciate him shaking his head yes over in the corner, because I would like us to take some time to do a deeper dive once we get your information, so that we can look at it on a system-wide basis. And perhaps that means getting all the providers back in a room and working on finances. All the providers did a great job coming together after the Fitch study and looking at the services provided throughout the county. And I think that, you know, the financial piece didn't get quite the same attention as some of those other things, because they were a little bit more front burner. But I don't think there's a commissioner here that would say that we don't appreciate the service that MedStar provides, and that we don't think there's value to it. I think, but from my perspective, it's a bigger question than just you guys, and I think we need to look at it on a system-wide basis and make sure that we're comparing apples to apples as much as possible in fairly allocating the available tax dollars. I also think it's an opportunity to relook at the whole issue of an ambulance district and putting in whether that's an option that we should look at again for viability purposes, where all the people in the county who are being served and who want to have somebody pick them up when they need to have their appendix, or they've had a stroke, or... It is something that I think everybody, push, come to shove, is willing to fund. It's just a question of how to do that fairly and equitably. So that's what I would like to see happen at this point. Commissioner Heiburger?
Just want to jump on that a little bit. We tax in the county for library services, and our library services are excellent. And that's been for, I think, since the 1970s or 80s that that tax has been in place. And I wish we could figure out a way, and I know there's always been talk about ambulance districts, we need to figure out a way that the citizens are paying directly for the services that they're getting, so that you guys aren't in this situation, and we aren't in this situation, because as Commissioner Bender said, we're not obligated by law to do it. But we need to figure out a way that we can support them, because we all need them. I live in the country. Commissioner Bender lives in the country. We don't have Sioux Falls services. We have, you know, you guys supporting us. And so, yeah, we need services. We get that.
Any other questions at this time? Justin, would you like to come forward? I promised you that I'd let you come back up. Sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Bendega, just a question.
Sure.
If I had told you that, okay, we do 200 calls in the county, and of the other 300 of that's between the cities that we provide services to, is that going to have true bearing on your decision to provide funding of the $50,000 that you provided to all the other services in the county?
As long as I can see something that is complete with the details that we asked for about where your calls are and the things that we talked about earlier, I would be more than happy to support that. But frankly, information is the key, and we don't have that information like everyone else has.
And I can definitely get those numbers for you. And that's not a problem. And I appreciate that we want to find a better solution to this whole problem. But we're looking at right now, we need something to sort of tide us over, is what we're here requesting, until we can get to that final solution of ambulance, county ambulance funding. To comment to what you had said, Commissioner Bender, we are the only service in Manyac County that has a private service to subsidize the deficits that we have on our 911 services. For example, you know, we have a transit service versus Humboldt having a steak dinner fundraiser. And the numbers that you get provided from those other ambulance services every year include those funding numbers. We've clearly been able to establish and sustain seven years of providing county ambulance service at the losses that you see here on the paper today. We've proven that we can do this. And the problem is, is that it's becoming overwhelming for us to continue to provide that. We're looking for just a little bit of help. We're not asking for it all. We're asking for a little bit of help until we can find that end solution to the countywide funding problem. So I guess, you know, back to, I am requesting today that we receive $50,000 in subsidy. Thank you.
Justin, are you suggesting then that your, oops, your transportation services that you're providing, just transporting non-emergency patients, is offsetting your $503,000 loss?
That's the only thing that it could be, Commissioner Bender.
That's what I'm suggesting.
From over the last seven years, we've provided this loss that you see here, and we're still here.
Right.
So I mean, providing those numbers, I don't know that would change the bearings of the topic of discussion, I guess, is my comment.
Well, I think we need more information. And so if you can provide us some additional information, we can reconsider putting it back on the agenda after we have a chance to look at that.
Just to be clear, you're requesting the number of rural county 911 calls. Is that right? And what other information are you requesting?
I would like, we can provide you, after this meeting, exactly the same information that we got from all the other ambulances that we support. And I would like that exact same information financially. We can make an arrangement so that it's not public, but we need to be able to see it.
Once again, Mrs. Bender, Commissioner Bender, that is my private business. It's like you going someplace else and asking somebody... If my private business was a grocery store, and that was funding the ambulance service, do you have a right to see what I make at my grocery store? The answer is no, you don't. You don't have a right to see my business at the grocery store that's supplying the money for my ambulance service. The information that you want, I will get you the numbers in the county, if that's a big deal to you, of the numbers that we do in the county. You will not see all my businesses on a spreadsheet. You will see the 911 business, which is the one that we're here talking about today. And you have, you guys have a choice to make. You've gotten the numbers, Commissioner Bendega and Commissioner Bender. The number's in front of you. And I appreciate the fact you're an accountant. You can see the hardship this is on my family then. You can see the hardship. Now, I don't know what the delays are again. Obviously, we do need a different type of ambulance solution in the future. I get it. But every time I've come to this board, we have been delayed. Every time. When I went to the other boards, they said, how can we help you? They have the same information that you have in front of you right now, and that's how they helped us. You can turn around and say, Jay, you're a liar. We don't believe your numbers. You can say whatever you want about me. The fact of the matter is, it costs a lot of money to have a very timely response, to have people sitting at your station 24/7, waiting for something that may or may not happen, and then calling somebody else in and paying them while they're on the call. Every call cost me twice, because we staffed another truck. So you, commissioners, you can play whatever delay games you want, and you can make this sound any way you want. And you can call me whatever name you want, because you don't like my attitude when I stand up here. But it's not your families that suffer. It's mine. And I'm just asking for the people that we serve to help us take the edge off. That's all I've ever asked. I'm not asking for anything more. Do you want me to ask for more? I can.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. That takes us to item 12. Is there a brief, it's a brief on the Human Services Center, Carrie Benz. Good morning.
No vote?
There's no motion at this time.
No motion, no vote.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Carrie Benz with Human Services. So I'm here this morning just to be able to provide you with a brief update and overview of HS in preparation for the fiscal year 2020 budget. And that sounds so weird to say 2020, but in preparation for that, we just wanted to be able to provide you with a little bit of information, so that as we progress toward that budget season, you have information that can help you make some of those decisions. So the first, the first slide that we have for you just identifies our top expenditures that we have for HS. So the one point that I just wanted to make about staffing, which we all know costs us money to be able to provide great service. Our staffing team, when I came on board in 2007, was a staff of about 16 staff. Since that time, we've grown to a total in 2019, as of today, we have 47 staff. We have 26 full-time and 21 part-time staff. To point out, the bulk of those part-time staff are for Safe Home, our 24/7, 365 facility that's on Third and Minnesota. So that's the bulk of that. But we've grown significantly, not only in staffing, but we've now been able to provide better and more thorough services to those in our community. So we take great pride in that and certainly respect the fact that we've been given the privilege to grow in number. Our next expenditure would be housing. Housing is impacted by a number of things. And when I say housing, I'm incorporating not only our rental assistance, but our deposit assistance, as well as our shelter expense. A number of those, that issue is really affected by a number of things. Primarily, that we have been able to establish some plans of action. So when a person comes in to apply for the assistance with county, we identify that in order to assist you, here's some things that need to happen now, as well as in the future. So that plan of action is really a plan that carries us forward, not only for the immediate, but in the future, our goal being preventative measures. How do we help you now, as well as in the future? How do we help you plan ahead? So that greatly impacts the amount of assistance we provide. There's also a lack of awareness of what housing is available, as well as the lack of affordable housing. That's a song you guys have heard song many times, and it continues to be relevant today. We're working on that, and forthcoming shortly, I'll tell you how we hope to address that a little bit. I really want to spend just a brief minute talking about the shelters, since that's kind of incorporated in this item. The shelters between the Union Gospel Mission and Bishop Dudley Hospitality House, and the work that they do, the services that they provide are very helpful to the county, and the services that they do for our community members. That has had significant impact on our budget in regards to how much, how much and how many we need to house in motels on a temporary basis. It's more than half that we have been able to cut out of the spending that we have had in our motel line item. So our partnership with them has been incredibly valuable, and certainly we would offer a shout out to them to say thank you for that work that they do. out to them to say thank you for that work that they do. And then the other thing just to note is that midway last year in 2018, you did approve a small increase in the amount that we are able to assist people in the two and three and four bedroom units. That had a minor impact on our budget, but obviously, as you well know, we were still able to stay in, very much in the black in that line item. But it definitely had significant impact in the number of people that we were able to place in housing. Moving down to hospitals, there's a moving target. Being able to predict an expenditure such as the hospital costs and the assistance that we provide to those who go into the hospital for their care, who don't have insurance, it really is a moving target. Not only do we never know how many people are going to need that assistance, but we also are impacted by the fact that we don't know the hospital costs that are forever changing and going up. And we also have our cases that are currently in litigation. And so you'll notice that each and every year when we have the opportunity to carry forward funds in our budget, I always do that and move those funds forward just because we don't know what that litigation is going to cost. So any amount of money that we can continually move forward to help cover that expenditure, we always plan on doing that. And probably the thing to note for 2018 is that we had a 7% increase in the number of notice of hospitalization. So while 7% doesn't seem like much, financially, that can have significant impact on any budget. And so certainly, we do our best. We take a lot of time going back and looking at trends, looking at numbers, looking at expenditures of the past and do the best prediction that we can. I think we do a pretty good job of that, quite honestly. Next on the list is burials. Obviously, there again, how do we know? How do we know the number of people that we will need to assist in this arena? Last year, our funeral allowance, we did ask for, we didn't ask for any change in the amount that we assisted with the prior year we had. And actually, that allowance has really done us quite well. I think the funeral directors are fairly pleased, although I think if you were to ask them if we could do more, they would certainly vote for that. However, we did have, in regards to the number of requests that we had, we actually had an increase of 30% of funerals. The average that we usually assist with is somewhere in the vicinity between 70 and 85, and it varies each year. This past year, we ended up with 116. So it's just a variable that's unknown. We don't know how many we're going to have, but it certainly is, it's a moving target for us, but we do the best we can with prediction. And then last for those expenditures is obviously utilities. Utilities is always, again, a moving target. How many people will need assistance? I will say that, again, I really offer a lot of kudos to the vendors that we collaborate with and partner with in regards to getting people linked to the services and the supports that are out there. The LEAP program, which is a federal program, is certainly a program that we utilize all the time. Our staff do everything they can to link people to those supportive services so that it doesn't have to be something that the county has to bear the sole expense. I would point out this past year in 2018, we had the opportunity to engage in a conference call with a local vendor because they were looking at making some changes in their guidelines and kind of their programming. And once we heard of those, we realized what a negative impact that could have, not only on the consumers that we serve, but on our budget as well. And so we had a conference call, discussed that, we shared kind of what our expenses were. They were a little flabbergasted when they heard about the amount of funds that the county expends each year. So their request was in turn, could we come and do a training with their staff so they could better understand how the county functions, how Human Services engages in support to our community? With those two events that took place, they changed back their rules and their guidelines and have resumed their old service that they used to engage in, providing that supportive programming to our community. And it's really invaluable. It's, they decided that partnering with us and doing the best that we can together made a whole lot more sense than the changes that they were offering. So it proved very fruitful. Moving on to the Human Services budget, I just wanted to give you a brief overview of the history of our budget. Obviously, as you can see, there is that spike when we had the recession and our budget increased significantly, followed by kind of that downtick and into the recovery phase. And really, since about 2013, our budget has remained pretty flat. We've done a lot within our budget with not a lot of increase. You can see that between 17 and moving into 18, there was that slight uptick. And I think there's a lot of reasons for that. I think there are, community growth has a lot to do with that. I think the economic challenges that we face, for example, the low unemployment rate has impact on that. And also the leadership at the federal level. Many programmatic changes have happened in the last year, year and a half. And so we've really kind of bared the brunt of that with those changes. And so I'm hopeful that with time and as changes happen, we can continue to make some accommodations so we can change that trajectory and instead of going up, we can again either at least flatten it out or stay status quo. Our next slide is for the expenditure history, and that really is just a reflection on the four top items that I just spoke about. Our housing, utilities, the hospital and the burials. Again, you can see those same spikes and changes in service or requests. And so rent, obviously, or housing being the largest of those, there's never a real predictor there. And so we, again, spend much of our time looking at and exploring the trends, looking at history. Probably the biggest impact that you'll see in our budget going forward and in 2020, we have two programs that work specifically with individuals who are difficult to house, primarily those that are homeless families. They have, the families are getting larger and more complex to try to house. We also have our Alliance Program, which works with those that are reentering our community after being incarcerated. And so our challenges are great and we're looking at ways that we may be able to start working differently with our landlords and embrace some options that may be beneficial to everyone. It's kind of a trifecta. But the rest of them should be no surprise. They're all, they're really kind of, they are like a zipper. It's just, it just depends on the time of year, it depends on the season, and sometimes it's just for no reason at all. Moving on to our spotlight of achievements, I have to say I'm really very, very proud of HS and the due diligence that we've had in this past year. We have changed our application for assistance. We've gone from seven pages down to a one-page, two-sided form. Our secretaries love it because it's a whole lot less paper that we have to deal with. And I think that the staff have really engaged in better conversations with our consumers, do a better job of listening because they ask a lot more questions. And so it really has been not only beneficial on the side of using less paper, but we've conserved time and we actually have really embraced and respect the fact that people that come to our office, they need to be in and they need to get out. And so it really has helped us improve that process. Community education, we have actually had 12 agencies that we've gone and done education with, been able to identify how we can better engage with and partner with them, which has been incredibly beneficial, not only for us, but for those that we serve. The development and additional data reports, as you would have received in January, our annual report, which was really long, we'll do some edits, so it's not quite so long next year. But you actually were able to receive some numbers from us for those supportive services that we provide. And I really congratulate IT. They have been sports in really helping us move forward with that and building that database, making a ton of edits to our program and software. But we're now finally able to get those outcome measures, which we so desperately need to move forward in, not only in providing service, but in being able to do a better job of doing predictions for budget factors. The development of quality assurance, we have an individual who does nothing but go over our documentation, our records to make sure that we are doing it adequately, appropriately, and efficiently. I think our documentation has improved significantly and us being able to provide those reports and Jamie putting together that annual report for you is significant, not only for you, but for us in looking ahead and trying to plan 2020 budget. And then also, certainly, we've spent a great deal of time investing in our staff. We've worked on really strengthening their skill sets by engaging them in our, in our process. They, we have lots of discussions. We look at how do we do best predictions? And then we also spend a lot of time in engaging in their ideas. How do we best serve our community? And it's been really a great exchange, one that's been well invested and received. So looking ahead at our strategic planning for 2020, we have a retirement that's happening. We have an individual who has submitted her resignation. She's been with us for 13 years and so it will be a true loss for us. However, with that resignation, we've also looked at how do we realign and do some of our services better and really dig in and looking at how do we best invest those funds in that position? So we're looking at a position that will do a much more thorough job, a focused job on working with landlords and building a database. Our goal would be is that we engage with other community partners to have more of a real-time database so we know what housing is available, we know where it is, how much it costs, and have much better options for that person and then have better outcomes, have successful placement, not only for those that we serve, but we're also talking about more successful placement with the landlords so that the landlords are better educated and better, more in the know of those that they're housing. Secondly, there's, we currently have two full-time and one part-time administrative clerk. And what I'd like to do, or what you can expect in our proposal for 2020, is we'd like to expand that position to being a full-time administrative clerk, so we would actually have three full-time. And I, that request comes with a great deal of thought because obviously, we could utilize that position in a lot of different places, but I think this would be one that would best serve our office. I would toss out the reminders that our office does a lot of supportive work for many of the other departments. We do all of the pricing of medical bills for the jail as well as JDC. We do the pricing and the billing for the mental illness board. So everything that, that, that position incurs, we process all of that. We also maintain the mental health database. And so all of those records and the information that are utilized for his reports and his information and ongoing service, we maintain that database. We also do the pricing, the billing, and also out of our budget comes the expense for the forensic exams for the state's attorney's office. And then not to mention the development, an ever-increasing number that are additional or new programs that we incur with that. We have increasing numbers of clients, we have increasing number of phone calls. We did a study, we're doing a time study of the front desk time in order to best be able to support why this expansion of time is needed. And even just in a, in a week's time, we have them keep track of phone calls. In our office, on an average, just the front desk receive on an average of 100-plus phone calls a day. And so trying to do that along with everything else, it's a lot, I'll say. So hopefully, we can, we can provide you with that information from our time study shortly. And then lastly on this slide is just to note that the homeless advisory board study that is underway, it's with Augustana Research, and we're hopeful to have the outcome of that study coming up here in March. And then we'll be able to update you on that as well. And then just really quickly, in summary for Safe Home, Safe Home, we actually hit our, I put six years here, but we hit our seven-year anniversary this year. What a delight that has been to see Safe Home grow and excel and really exceed our expectations, I believe. There alone, we have five full-time staff and 20 of the part-time staff that I noted earlier. It is a 33-unit, full-time occupied complex. We do have a waiting list for services. There's about, on an average, anywhere between 12 to 20 individuals that are on that list at any one time. It is a 24/7 365. And so obviously, with that comes maintenance. We do have a building reserve account that we utilize and so it's not at an expense to the county per se. But we currently are replacing one washer with an industrial. For this whole time, we have had two washers and two dryers that are just like regular home, your washer, your dryer for 33 folks, along with all the laundry that we do for the facility. Let's just say they work hard, they get a workout. And so we're finally replacing one with an industrial and we're, I don't know who's more excited. Quite honestly, I think staff are more excited than the residents.
Carrie, we need to kind of wrap things up.
Sure. And so then, obviously, the other expense that we had, that we're looking at incurring is replacing or adding another freezer just because of size. So finally, really, the last question that Safe Home has is what's next? Where do we go from here? What are going to be the next, what's the next adventure that we go down with Safe Home in order to provide those services?
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Carrie?
I'm sure I'd ask a question. Honestly, I had a little trouble focusing at the beginning of your presentation because I was hungover from the previous discussion. But as we go forward to pay our utility bills, February has been a terrible month for weather. Do you expect we'll have a spike, so to speak, a hangover from February on your utility bills?
You know, we really are so fortunate. We work with LEAP and a lot of those supportive programs that really help us to not have that hangover per se. We've done a good job of planning and honestly, this time of year is usually our quietest because we do have people that are getting tax returns. And so we end up having a lighter season this time, this time of year. Now, if you were to ask me that same question coming up in March and April, my answer may change.
And if I may, I guess, have you, what's our average cost on these burials? Is it going down or hanging in there?
Yeah. Actually, I'm happy to report that we've worked with the funeral directors for the most part. I would say it's on an average of about that 25, about $2,000. We have far more cremations than what we do, the actual traditional burials. That has really spiked in the last couple of years. So quite honestly, no, we really haven't had. I don't foresee a huge spike at all. I think if we stay on track, we should be fine with the budget that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So that takes us to item 13. I think, DJ, we've got you for several items in a row here. First, item 13 is to consider bid results and award recommendations for Project MC-18-12.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. This project is for two covert replacements and we also had a large covert replacement project that we awarded here a few weeks ago. This one is in addition to that, of course. We do, every two or three years, we do some covert inspections and they catch most issues that we find. However, sometimes there's some issues that due to a flooding event or a large rainstorm or something like that, or even just heavy vehicles, we have coverts that fail. And last fall, we had two coverts that failed and, or partially failed, and so we needed to get them on an emergency replacement project. And that's what these two covert replacements are for, or just emergency replacements? It's not traditional for us to do these in the wintertime. That just shows the, the need to get them done sooner rather than later, rather than us waiting for the summer to do these projects. And so with that, I would request that you award, we received four bids for these, for this replacement project. $96,488.60 is the low bid with Midwest Contracting, and we are requesting your approval and signing of that contract. I'll stand by for any questions that you have.
Make a motion for the chair to sign that contract.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, roll call vote.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 14, DJ.
Item 14, I believe, is the result, bid results and award recommendation for Project MC-19-3, authorization of Chairman- Authorization of Chairman to Sign Agreement with Chris Greasy for mowing and trimming. This is the first year that we are doing contracted services for mowing and trimming. In the past, we've done in-house mowing and trimming. And at an average cost over the last few years, it's been I'm sorry, I had this number written down on a different paper. Oh, right here. About $88,000 a year for for us to do it in-house. This last year and the and the year before, we've had some increased costs in the leasing of the tractors that we use for this, for this work to do it in-house. That would result in a much higher cost for us if we were to do it in-house again this year. And so we made the determina- determination after an analysis that we completed over the winter to perform contractor services for this work. And we received two bids for this work. One of them was Chris Greasy. He's the low bidder. As you know, he was an employee of the department. He recently retired. He's familiar with the work and and understands it. And so his low bid of $56,875.45 is for an estimated three rounds of mowing for for the summer of 2019. And also for trimming around guard rail and bridges and and that kind of stuff. So requesting your approval of this contract, and I'll stand by for questions on this one.
Any questions for DJ? Commissioner Barth?
DJ, so will Mr. Greasy be using your tractors or will he be providing the tractors?
It's all contractor furnished equipment and material, so he'll be using all of his own stuff.
I hope he hasn't bid too low to make a nickel on this. I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second.
So there's been a motion and a second. Commissioner Benega?
I'm assuming that Chris is able to provide liability insurance and performance-related bonding insurance?
So the the bidding documents for this project are the sim- the same type of bidding documents that we that we use for a construction project of this size. And so he'll, he has bonding and insurance information that he submitted that we've reviewed. And he will have to submit the same information that any other contractor would have to submit.
The other, the difference though is that the other individuals are not doing this as an individual company. They're doing it as a corporation and Chris has a little more hurdles to go through to be able to ensure that the county doesn't get sued with any concerns, frankly, as an individual rather than a corporation.
With the contract level being just over $56,000, I'm not surprised that that he decided to bid as a sole proprietor. We do a few other small contracts, I would say less than $100,000 every year with sole proprietors. In the future, if he would to bid this, would, if he were to bid this again, I would expect that he would probably form some sort of corporation. His retirement was only a few, a couple of weeks ago. And so my guess is that he just hasn't gotten everything together to do that at this point.
I guess I would ask the state's attorney to review the contract to make sure that we are covered from a liability standpoint. There's a whole different program for an individual than there is for a corporation.
Well, I think the state's attorney's office reviewed it.
Okay.
And Ms. Warekamp signed off on it. And so I'm unaware of whether or not she had those conversations. But if 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 possible, prior to the chair's signing, the motion could be subject to me just confirming that when we're in break. So you could qualify your motion with that.
I think I made the motion. I'll qualify it with that.
Second.
Okay. The other thing I'd point out is that specifically as part of this contract, the commission is making a determination that the transaction and the terms of the contract with Mr. Greasy, a former county employee are fair, reasonable, and in the best interests of the public. So that's inherent in the motion, I would say. So there's been a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Barr?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
All right, thank you. It passes unanimously. Next item is item 15, to authorize the chairperson to sign an agreement to approve SD DOT micro-surfacing reimbursement to Minnehaha County for maintenance and repair costs. DJ Boothey.
Commissioners, in 2018, we did a micro-surfacing project that crossed over in South Dakota Department of Transportation overpass over I-90. And and per South Dakota regular business practices, after construction is complete, they enter into a reimbursement agreement with the with the agency that did the work to reimburse for the portion that was constructed inside DOT right-of-way. And so that happens to be 0.34 miles in this particular case. And using our contract, unit prices that equates to approximately $11,461. And so we are requesting the Chair's signature and approval of an agreement to reimburse Minnehaha County for that dollar amount from the Department of Transportation.
Any questions for DJ? Entertain a motion?
So move.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, DJ. I appreciate you coming. Next item is item 16, Consider a Recommendation to Approve $16,000 Juvenile Diversion Reimbursement Allocation for the Boy Scouts of America from Funds Received Through the Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Initiative. Carol Mueller?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commission Office. And yes, before you is reimbursement that you've seen for at least two years prior to this. The Boy Scouts, we've been fortunate to work with them on diversion for juvenile issues. They do teen court is one of the examples of things that we're all very familiar with. We do receive some dollars from the state to help support these programs. We received $167.45 per successful diversion with 103 of the 296 successes from the Boy Scout programs. So by the time you put that together, we take a 10% cost for doing all the statistical work and reports, everything to it, we are requesting $16,000 to be given to the Boy Scouts.
Any questions for Carol?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barr?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Next item is item 17, to authorize the chairperson to sign an agreement with the University of South Dakota for professional services. Carol Mueller?
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, before you today is a contract that has been in the works and been discussed for for several months out there. And this is a contract with USD Sanford School of Medicine. You know that we're involved in several things. Those include triage, pre-trial, juvenile justice alternatives, and community coordinating council. In this situation, we would no longer have an FTE in our county that does those, that work. Instead, we would be contracting with USD for those services. And along with those services, we would also have the work being done for all the statistical analysis for that. There actually is a savings to our general funds of about $16,000 per year to go through and do that. The advantage, and I know I'm condensing several pages of information for you. The advantage to the county is that we end up working with national models in terms of university research to be able to do this. And also to be able to tap into and access their resources for students and med students to be able to do things.
Questions for Carol? Now, we've had an opportunity to think about this for a little bit. Any, Commissioner Heiburger?
Quick comment. This is a project that we've been working on for a long time. And to be able to collaborate with a university and bring in some of the different skill sets that they have that the county isn't able to have puts us recognized nationally as to the work we're doing collaboratively with a university. It'll bring in a lot of different resources that, like I said, we don't have access to. And I think in the long run, this is going to be a really good program and and will be a model for other states as they move forward with trying to work with with universities and what they have to offer.
Anything else? And I'd entertain a motion. A motion to approve? Contract with the USD School of Professional Services.
Second.
You have a comment?
Yeah, I I think this is a good trial basis. I would like to review it regularly to see if it continues to work as presented. It's a one-time shot, so to speak, but let's analyze it on a regular basis.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is also Carol's. It's Consider a Motion to Authorize Change Order Number Four for the Jail Expansion. Carol?
This is the easiest one that we've had come forward. This is a change order for the jail. As I think most people are aware that we're that we're constructing and doing work on. This is a credit back to us, or it is a, it is a deduct, rather. And this is a deduct for $24,668 for about a dozen different miscellaneous items that you have listed in front of you.
Any questions for Carol?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Barr? Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, just a quick comment. Not every day we'll be this happy.
At least for one item. Next item, 19 Legislative Update. Carol Mueller again.
Thank you, Chairperson. We are at the crossover point in legislature, so there is, they are working fast and furious and having a lot of late nights and long meetings in peer. We have several bills that we have worked on. Those that have talked about additional revenue that would help with revenue for the counties outside of property tax have not been successful. And so those have stopped at this particular point. We have two bills of particular interest to us right now. Both of those are House bills. House Bill 1186 is a bill that would have the state reimburse counties for expenses when we have to provide the defense for somebody who is arrested, commits a crime, and they're already in prison. So that has been brought up quite heavily by Bonham County, which is where Springfield's located at. And pleased to go through and support that particular bill because we do do a number of those cases per year. At this point, there's an amendment on there that there'd be a floor of $1,500 per case that the county would have to cover. And anything above that would be covered through the state of South Dakota. The very last bill that you guys have is actually 1232, which is to revise the provisions regarding emergency commitment. And that one did pass out of the House yesterday. It was on the floor. I listened to the testimony last night. And basically what it does is it takes drug and alcohol, emergency IVCs, involuntary commitments, takes them out of the court system and moves them into the mental health board. And we appreciate the ability to discuss, reflect, and improve involuntary holds. We do have concerns that this is moving too quickly and is not being thoroughly fleshed out. As you know, here in Minnehaha County, we've done several things in order to make sure that those, that people don't get stopped in a situation. The contract attorneys that we're doing right now has been incredibly helpful. We also have moved doing all the assessments for people in detox. We're doing them internally. One, it saves not only time but also money. And if you're the person who is in detox and you have already told your story to one of our counselors, we don't make you start over again with another counselor to tell that story to. So those things, we've done some good things already. We will continue to monitor this particular bill.
Any questions for Carol? That House Bill 1232 kind of dropped at the last minute, last Wednesday is when language was added to it. And so we really have been scrambling to try to keep up with what those changes will mean for the county. And so I think it is something that we we all need to pay attention to. It's one of those situations where there may be an inadvertent cost shift to the county for some of these services, if some of these, and so we just need to watch that and make sure that this process is thoroughly vetted and and makes sense for everyone. So that, with that, we'll move to item 20 Liaison Reports. I think Commissioner Barth, you had something you wanted to mention.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on last night's meeting, which we again had four meetings. We had joint with Del Rapids, joint with the city of Sioux Falls on a Board of Adjustment, joint with the city of Sioux Falls on zoning, and then our own meeting. And honestly, we only had two board members from Del Rapids present at 7:00. And we were just about to call it off when a third one came trundling down the hall. I don't know why they don't ride together. I mean, so anyway, it it didn't take as long as as last time. But again, just like in in other meetings, there was some hostility. We had this fellow from, who wants to open a car dealership in Lyons, who a couple of months ago or so, we asked him to clean up the property before we zoned a commercial for him. And he's not done a single thing and said he's not going to. And that if we don't let him have a car dealership there and sell the rusting junk that's there now, he's going to sell it to another guy who will treat the property worse. What can I say? In any case, I really believe that we need to have access to the training room. I know Carol sent an email. We still don't, I believe, have a key to that. We, compensation for the planning commission is still very minimal. At least three of the members of our board still had cows calving last night and spent hours here in Sioux Falls on slippery roads. And we need to have, again, security present. And there is that issue of potential joint jurisdiction with with Hartford. And Scott went, Scott Anderson, our planning director, went to, well, maybe he can tell you what he did in Hartford. Come on up, Scott. But, you know, and then there's the option that crooks might want to join the fund. And we might have, you know, eight meetings a night. And waiting for commissioners from other communities to show up, it's it's really getting to be kind of a burden. Maybe we need more than one meeting a month. Scott, want to report on Hartford?
Yes, last Tuesday night, I attended the Hartford City Council Meeting. They had a discussion on joint plating, sorry, joint zoning control. And it was a good discussion, lengthy. We discussed the need for, I reminded them that they, if they did enter into joint zoning control, that four of their city council members would need to be present at our meetings on Tuesday mornings. I didn't know what their work schedule was. They all looked like they were probably young professionals. And so I didn't know if that was going to be an issue for them. They were, they thanked me for that. We also talked about the fact that Donna Kelly, our state's attorney, is a, has been attending our planning commission meetings regularly, and I'm grateful for that. She also feels that each municipality should be sending their own legal counsel to advise them when things do come up. Last night was a very good example. We had a lot of discussion on a variance out in the joint area for the city of Sioux Falls. And there was some, you know, potential legal questions that could have arisen from that.
The lawyers agree. We need more lawyers.
Well, I did pass that on to the city of Hartford and they, so I, during the, during the meeting, it was quite obvious that really part of the reason that they really want joint zoning control is they felt that they would be able to have a bigger say in zoning enforcement. And this is all coming about because of the, some of the zoning issues we've had at the Brower Edition with junkyards or a specific junkyard. We we have, through the, the the help of the state's attorney, we were able to get that all taken care of. And Maggie really was key on that, Maggie Gillespie. I let them know that, you know, if you do, if we do enter into joint zoning control, they will not have zoning enforcement obligations or rights in that in that area. They were somewhat surprised about that. So as a result of all of the issues I brought up, they really would like to have some more time to think about this. And they continued it to March 5th. I will plan on going again on March 5th and being there to answer any questions. And and then once we, once we, once they decide, and if they decide to move forward, we will have to work closely with them. There were potential, some potential already legal issues procedurally that have not been done correctly. And I've been working with our state's attorney's office to make sure that they that they, that we get those done perfectly. This is, this is a situation, and I explained that to the city of Hartford. It may not happen now, and it may not happen for five, 10, or 15 years, but I will guarantee you that someone will challenge a decision that a joint board is going to make, and the one thing that, the first thing that they will attack is procedurally how this was all adopted. And if they can find that, you know, a comprehensive plan wasn't reviewed by the city and the county together, then that's what they'll attack. And so they were grateful for that, and we're going to work closely with our, our state's attorney and their city attorney to make sure it's all done exactly correct. So.
Thank you. Commissioner Hiperger?
Just a comment. Thank you, Scott, for what you do. You spend an awful lot of extra time in for planning and zoning with the meetings that Jeff attends to, and Jeff, thank you for the time that you spend. None of us really want to spend a Monday night here for three, four hours, and you have been very grateful to do that. But Scott, too, you know, just going to Hartford meetings, and I know you attend a lot of other meetings that we don't always know about, and it takes a lot of your own personal time, which I agree is, I mean, which I understand is part of your job, but I still greatly appreciate what you do.
And I will just chime in about the need for security. I really do feel we need that security. Last night, it was quarter to 10, and we were leaving, and I happened to notice that Commissioner Barth was approached by a homeless person in the parking lot begging for money.
He wanted eighty-five cents.
So, I hung around to make sure that he wasn't completely accosted, and I saw the guy leave, and then I made sure that I left because, I mean, it's 10 o'clock at night, and a stranger's walking up to his car. So, I, it just is, you know, one of those things that you have to be aware of, and I'm not saying that we have to have security here all the time, but it's just, you don't know who's going to be entering into this building when we're all busy here in a meeting and the doors are wide open, which they need to be for open meeting laws. It just is a little bit, can be a little bit unnerving because there's a lot of foot traffic that comes through this part of the city at night, surprisingly, so.
To follow on with that, you know, our custodians aren't really the ones that should be checking the restrooms to see if someone's brought in a half a case of wine. But Scott, you also ran into Mayor Rounds at an event recently.
I did. I ran into Mayor Rounds at the home show, and the Crooks. And initially, we discussed some of his projects that he's working on, but once again, that joint jurisdiction came up with the city of Crooks. And so I know that they're, it's still on their horizon or their, they're interested in that still. So, that may come around as well.
Chair Benega?
Scott, can you help me, remind me, the communities that we have formal joint jurisdiction agreements with?
Yes. We have formal jurisdictions, we have formal agreements with zoning, with the city of Sioux Falls and Del Rapids. We have formal plating jurisdiction with the city of Brandon, Sioux Falls, Hartford, and Del Rapids. And then, and that, those are the, so there's joint zoning control, and there's, then there's joint plating. I'm sorry, and Crooks also has, Crooks also has joint plating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, last night, we also had, we approved a little strip mall that borders on Holly Avenue and Brandon. And again, there was, Brandon wasn't represented, but I mean, this is, you know, a nine iron away from Brandon on the subject, thank you.
Well, I would echo Commissioner Hiperger's comments. We really appreciate all the hard work that all of you do, and you deal with a lot of diverse issues that affect people where they live, so we appreciate that. Any other liaison reports? Any new business? Any old business? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
No exec?
We are not going to have, we're going to reschedule the exec, and so, no exec.
Let's adjourn.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.